Good evening, the planning board is now in session. Today is January 20th, 2015, and we are being televised. Let's so, let's so, the previous minutes, minutes of the previous meeting of October 7th and December 12th, 2014.
No, the December 9th.
I mean, December 9th, sorry.
Motion.
Motion made by Pat, second by John?
Oh, he's here.
We're here. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Now, the one, the minutes of the meeting of January 6th, 2015.
Joe.
Lena McCarthy was, oh, was, um...
You have to get a motion.
Here, so, Joe, motion for...
Second.
Okay, so there was two of us, second, all in favor? Two in favor? Two abstain?
What'd you do? The two of you represent the majority?
The two of us were very, very, the majority at that time.
Yes.
Yeah. All set?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing in favor, let's see. Number three, bond reduction, Walden Woods, try to put a agreement, second extension, modification. All right.
Yeah, this was, um...
Do I have that here?
Yes, number three, this was a letter from Bonnie, about the bond reduction for Walden Woods relating to the Upper Charles Trail that's substantially complete. The first tripartite agreement was for $534,018 back in February of 2014. Bonnie's recommending that the reduction in the bond down to $10,000, and she detached some information relating to that. I put together a tripartite agreement, second written extension and modification, that reduces the $534,018 by $524,018, so the remaining $10,000 is there, and that should cover it. I have the signed agreement from Logan Huffman and Mutual One Bank, so you need a motion to approve, and then I need three signatures.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the bond of, from...
Ten thousand.
Ten, two, two, ten thousand. Motion made by John, second by Joe, all in favor? Unanimous of four.
You only need three signatures, Larry?
Yep.
Where's yours?
I didn't, just let you guys sign it.
Okay.
I feel left out.
Joe?
Nope, seven, yeah, I need three signatures.
All right. All set?
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, I just need that pad.
Does that need to be notarized or not?
Oh, okay. Yeah, we've got to set up to do that.
Okay.
All right, number four, revised bond rea...
We have to accept the tripartite agreement, correct?
That's what the vote was.
It was for the reduction in the bond.
Well, that's what the tripartite agreement did.
That's what's...
That's what the vote should have been.
I think we just said, as long as it says that, I think we just did the bond.
Yeah, the motion needs to...
Just modify the, um...
Reduce, reduce the bond by modifying the tripartite agreement.
Because that, we never said anything about the extension in time.
You're right.
Which isn't here.
You're absolutely right, Joe. We did not say that. So, we need a, we need a motion.
Well, motion, motion to accept the tripartite agreement as, as presented by you, as written, I guess would be the motion.
Motion made by Joe to accept the tripartite agreement as written. Here, a second?
Second.
Second by Pat, all in favor? Unanimous of four. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah. You can do the 7:05.
All right. Okay, it's 7:05, and we have a public hearing. Ready, Karen?
The application of railroad street holdings LLC, 51 Summer Street, while I ask for an amendment to a previously approved special permit to construct a 42-unit, 50-bed assisted living facility to be located on a 1.47 acre site at Railroad Street and Cemetery Street as shown on assessors map 48 blocks 33 and 34 RA and IA zones.
Note my abstention.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to hear a presentation first, or...
I think we'll do the presentation first, yes. What?
Evidently, I've just been informed that you need four, so I'm going to invoke the rule of the necessity.
Yeah, I know that. Okay, Bob, let's go. Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, um, this is the assisted living facility for Blair House. Obviously, if you've driven by, you see what it looks like. It's a very nice building. It's, pretty much, construction is progressed quite a bit. And we've come before you with some modifications to the plan that were, some caused by site conditions that we didn't expect, others just because we're trying to make the site a little bit better, a little bit more, more workable. The original plan that we, obviously, we've been before you before with this, we came up, we gave a recommendation to the ZBA to allow us to get a variance to allow the, eliminate the landscape strip along Railroad Street and put the parking back in that we originally had these six spaces. Also, we got a variance to allow an eight-foot-high fence around the property, as opposed to a six-foot-high fence, and you can see most of that fence has been constructed already if you drive by.
I saw that today coming in.
That's good, you know, it's a nice fence. So, a couple of other items that we came up with is that we reworked the underground detention, utilizing some better technology and some different lot process, and we reduced the size of it significantly. That's already been reviewed by Bonnie and approved. She did that so that we could actually get it in the ground and they could pave over it prior to, you know, the season ending. The other issue was there are these two large oak trees along what is now Casino Holloway, which used to be Cemetery Street. When we started doing the excavation work to provide for this parking lot, we were starting to get very close to the root system of those trees. They're very well-established trees. One's a, one's a 48-inch oak, you know, you know. So, we had an arborist come take a look at it and really suggested this, that we needed to keep a certain amount of distance away from it with any, any excavation or, you know, or unexposed soil. So, what we did was we had discussions with Larry and we decided that along this area here for these particular parking spaces, these parking spaces would be allowed to be 16 feet long instead of 18 feet long, and that the travel way here, instead of being 24 feet, would be 20 feet. So, that's, that's shown, that reflects this, we built a wall here to, you know, along the limits to protect the trees so that everything will be built up and protect those two trees. So, that's, that's major, that's one major change. And then the other one was when we started to lay out, when we laid out this parking lot, and you can see, it used to be where this orange is here, we started putting, tried to put stakes in the ground, we found that this, this armored slope actually came a little bit more into the property. It had been covered over with, with dirt over the years, whatever, and, you know, to make a level area, and it really wasn't conducive to paving over it. So, parking is never an issue here, we have more spaces than we were required to have. So, what we did was we eliminated two spaces, we pulled this in to make this more, more buildable. And that's basically the changes to the site plan which have caused us, which have required us to come in and ask for a change, a modification to the special permit.
We'll read the letters that the people have written.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Can you wait till we get this, then you, just, we'll get, read these letters, all right?
Jomita?
No, I can do that. The applicant requests amendment to the special permit approved by the planning board on January 8th, 2013, to construct a 42-to-50-bed assistant living facility on our, in the site plan, I'm just going to go to the next one. Cemetery Street specifically, the applicant proposes to amend the site plan associated with 2013 special permit noted above as follows. Revised, reduce the dimensions and southwesterly parking lot in order to protect and retain two existing mature trees, which you just said. Eliminate, eliminate the easterly two parking spaces and the southerly, southeastly parking lot in order to protect the existing slope with stone retaining wall. Number three, provide six additional parking spaces within the required landscape buffer located along the facing railroad street, ZBA variance 121114. Revised the underground detention infiltration chamber and position the upper end drainage design as referenced in the hydraulic and hydraulic report dated November 13th, 2014, by prepared by Gary and Handling. And number five, add an eight-inch security fence, which you already have, granted variance 121114. The other applicant, all other applicable zoning and special permit requirements appear to be met, therefore, I recommended, to recommend the requested special permit, special permit amendments be approved, subject to the relevant department comments. So, looking through the comments, zoning board of appeal had a number of comments, which I won't go through.
Well, that was the variance.
That was the variances.
Did variances.
Yep.
And then the, Bonnie recommends, recommends, she says, okay. She goes through the different calculations.
I'll just look at the date.
Oh, this is November, okay.
So, the, the follow-up letter.
Okay.
I'm assuming they address, you address all the concerns.
Okay. You're right, thanks, Pat. And, so as I go through, it seems like everyone, over the months of you doing this, have positive comments, and now I will ask the board if they have any comments.
I just have a quick question. Bob, can you refresh my memory? The parking, was it employee parking, or was it for the buses? I, I, I'm getting confused on...
This is, this is employee parking. Buses are, they're in and out.
Forgive me, when you come back and forth a few times, I, I lose track of where...
Buses are related to the nursing home facility.
Okay, what, what goes where? That's all, I was just curious what we were, what we were talking about.
The other item at that location is that the edge of the sidewalk is basically a bumper stop, so the sidewalk's wide enough to accommodate the two-foot overhang, so in effect, you have an 18-foot deep parking stall there anyway, which is, which is one of the reasons I'd recommend it.
That's what I wanted to ask, is that why was that sidewalk? Because I was worried about that.
It's an eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah.
That was the option, that was the option when we discussed it, whether or not we would just reduce the size of the sidewalk to keep the spaces and have the sidewalk kind of jog in. We felt it was better to have the continuous sidewalk at eight feet, as opposed to portion of it be six feet.
Good point. John?
I just want to emphasize, there's no change in use here, in terms of the number of beds, number of residents, number of employees. It's strictly trying to make the site more...
Right.
Well, it's driven by the end result of what the site bared, I mean, that's, it's a difficult...
Any other comments?
Did you indicate that was the letter from CSX in here also?
Yes.
Not, not that, not that I think any of the things that they say at this point in time are of any interest, but we just want to at least acknowledge the fact that they did send us a letter.
They did.
Yeah, if there was a new person at CSX didn't realize it was already built, and that this is an amendment to the site plan of it, and so I explained it to them, and they didn't have any problem. Of course, they didn't bother to send a follow-up letter, but, yep, it's a little consequence.
Any other questions, John, Joe? Well, I went by there today, that's on my way down here, and I saw the fence, and I, everything looks like it's ready to go. I'll have to reserve my room.
I say, you gotta get your room reserved.
Wait until after you vote, we don't want you coming.
Okay.
We're trying to get the paperwork to catch up with reality here.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion that we approve the special permit, and that we, we also approve the site plan as amended.
Have a second? Second by John, motion by Joe to approve the, the site plan and also the amended special, the special permit. All in favor? Unanimous of four.
Take these and call me when you get them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Frank, you?
Good night, John. Good to see you.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Number five?
Four.
Four, sorry. Revised bond reduction of South Central Estate subdivision, Casey Drive.
Bonnie had done an estimate originally, and that was approved. In the interim, it was discovered that the reason, the original estimate was what it was, was that we were applying it to the entire length of Casey Drive, and, and the board confirmed that at one of those last meetings. So, this is just catching up with that. So, based on that, the estimated cost was 381, 780. So, I would ask for your vote on that. They've already submitted the bond, and it's been locked in at the treasurer, so...
So, you're requesting that we accept the new bond at 381, 780?
Right.
Motion?
Second. Bond accepted at 381, 780. Motion made by John, second by...
No, the other way around.
Joe, Pat, second by John. All in favor? Unanimous of four. Okay. Number six. Amended site plan, 235 East Main Street, into...
No, no, 150.
Number five.
150, oh, I bet, I checked that off too quickly. Amended site plan, 150 East Main Street, O'Reilly Auto Parts.
Hi again.
Hi there.
Josh Swelling with Bowler Engineering.
Okay, let's go and read these letters first, or... The applicant remet, the applicant requested amended site plan approval to follow, to allow the construction of a 6,650-square-foot commercial building on a subject property. The proposed use will be a retail wholesale auto part store and associate, and associate parking. The house at 7 Free Street, 3301, 32 dash O dash 51 is to be raised. The proposed building will accommodate 3,450 square foot of retail space and, as well as 32, 3,200 square feet of wholesale area. Adequate off-street parking is provided to, in two parking lots. The side access and traffic circulation is designed to prevent access directly from East Main Street, given the close proximity of the intersection side streets. The applicant has sought five variances, and at their 61214 meeting of the zoning board of appeals, granted two and denied three of the variances. Specially, specifically, the ZBA only granted the request of a 15-foot building setback from, from Free and Hamilton Street and an 8.8-foot setback from Hamilton Street for the trash enclosure. In addition, the ZBA prohibited the selderly driveway on Hamilton Street and limited the northerly driveway on Hamilton Street to a one-way entrance, see attached. The applicant's, all, all applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met, therefore, I recommend the site plan be approved, be approved, subject to the relevant departmental comments. And the comments are, this is from Bonnie, our engineer. I review the request of the site plan review filled by O'Reilly Auto Parts and Route 16, and I reviewed it. Here are my questions as fall as my comments. One, I question why the parking lot is to be paved with concrete application of salt-based, salt-based deicing materials will corrode the concrete. Number two, submit actual drainage calculations, including TSS removal worksheets and all invert evaluation. Three, on sheet C7, have you got all these?
Yeah.
You have all these?
Yep.
All right, so she has all these comments. Four, on sheet six, C7, details on the notes, delete the last sentence, so forth and so on. So, you have all these. Also, the very last one is add, add a note, parking light, parking lot lights shall not disturb budding properties. So, you have all that, you've seen, you've talked with...
Yes, they're all easily addressable. We've already given her some...
Have you?
Pointed out drainage cals.
All right, so it's just the calculations and, let's see, what else? The sewer department, at a meeting of December 16th, 2014, the board, the board sewer commission unanimously voted to approve the amended sub-plan on 150 East Main Street pending the use of a six-inch sewer pipe and documentation. Meet the rules and regulations of the Milford Sewer Department, and also the Fire Department. Thank you for the opportunity, their comments.
Changes?
No changes. The Milford Water Company has, has a following plan amendments. You, have you spoken with them?
Yeah.
You know, only water company approved materials, old, one-inch water services, so forth. So, you have all that?
Yeah.
Okay. And... And then there's the decision from the zoning board of appeals. You have that decision with you? Okay. So, why don't we go on, and then we'll, we'll have the members speak afterwards?
Sure.
So, thank you for your time tonight. Last time I was with you was back in June, prior to going to zoning board, and the zoning board followed to a T the recommendation of this board, namely, they granted the relief for the setbacks to the building along the sides into the trash enclosure along Hamilton. They did not approve our request for the 25.6% versus 25% max building coverage, so we have reduced, O'Reilly has reduced the size of the building to comply with that. I think it was about 200 square feet that we were off, and you guys and your, as well as the zoning board, said, why can't you just make it meet? So, that's what happened. And then we had requests for reductions in paving thickness based on the way the bylaws read versus what the geotechnical report said. We thought, why not ask for relief from that? And you folks told us, as well as the zoning board, don't seek relief from that, just do it. So, that's what's being done. The project, just by way of orienting you, the original plan had two full movement driveways, both in the front of the store where the retail operation will occur. Zoning board said to eliminate the driveway closest to the intersection of Hamilton and East Main, so that's reflected on the revised plans that are before you. They also said limit any access on Hamilton, meaning the driveway we had shown to the rear, as an entrance only, and that's reflected on this revised plan as well. So, the conditions of the zoning board have all been satisfied. The parking count has essentially stayed the same. We picked up one space when we eliminated the driveway. The screening to the rear has stayed the same. We have a privacy fence along the rear property line, trying to be sensitive to the residents back there. You can see that we have ample trees, we have the 12 required, and a few more than the 62 required shrubs on the planting plan. We're going from an existing open space of 11% up to 26% open space, so that's a significant improvement from the existing condition. I'd be happy to talk more about the auto retail use or wholesale use or anything that the board would like to hear. All of the comments received from staff are easily addressable.
Could you address the ones from the town engineer?
Sure.
Please.
Number one, why is the parking lot to be paved with concrete versus asphalt? So, O'Reilly is a standard, proposes concrete at all of their locations because they feel that it's more durable, it ruts less than asphalt paving will over time, and they, they've, from their experience at operating thousands of locations, it's actually less maintenance than, than pavement. So, that's item one. Submit act, number two, submit actual drainage cals, including TSS removal worksheet and invert elevations. We pointed out simply to the town engineer that those calculations are on the utility plan, and then we provided the additional TSS removal calculations that did not appear on that plan to her directly. The items, I can go through the, the other detailed comments, but they're, they're pretty minor, and we're happy to address those in the final plans, as well as the adding the note relative to parking lots. And I don't think that, we pointed out to the town engineer that we do have an opaque fence proposed along the rear, the second to the last item. Oak trees on the north property line don't provide year-round screening.
And also the lighting? The lighting on this, on this property?
It's all contained on the property, but we're had, happy to add a note to reinforce that. Yep.
Yeah, because there are neighbors that are in that whole area, you know?
Very close to.
They're very, very close. So, the lighting is going to be...
Mrs. Rizzoli lives right behind there.
Right, yes. That I know. Okay.
Any others?
Joe?
Yeah, I have, I have significant concerns.
Okay.
I, I have no idea why the zoning board said that they didn't want access out to Hamilton Street, but I've been down there, and to take all of the out traffic onto Free Street to me is a travesty. To try to take all that traffic through there, just doesn't make sense. You know, as a professional engineer, I can't, I can't certainly go for this, and, and I can't allow, I certainly wouldn't vote for it and won't vote for it. The safety is a, is a major concern for me, and trying to take all that traffic exiting out and trying to have both in and out going onto Free Street and having, making sure all of it's going there. I can't live with...
I agree.
The other issue that I have with it, to a certain extent, I mean, that, that forces all, all the traffic onto Free Street, and, and then we've got people going through neighborhoods to get out. If they're going to take a right out onto it, it's down Free Street to Ravanna, back over to Hamilton, makes no sense to me. Or, and, and as a board, we know the traffic on Main Street is atrocious. The other option is taking a left out onto Main Street and then taking a left onto Hamilton Street, which again, makes no sense to me whatsoever. So, for those two reasons, you know, effectively, to me, that, that gets us to the point of this, this site, if the zoning board is, you know, feels this way, can't ask for a variance because I, me as a member of the planning board and looking at safety issues, can't vote for it in this way. I need to have that access out onto Hamilton Street, and I need to allow some of that traffic to get out onto Hamilton Street. And people that are going to the, to the northwest section of the town can go down Hamilton Street and exit out that way, and keep them off Main Street, keep them off of Ravanna Street, keep them off of Free Street, because that isn't where we should be putting them. Neither street is great, I'll, I'll admit that. Both of those streets, if you go down there and look at them, and I went down and looked at them, are relatively narrow, so the right-of-way is not tremendous, neither one, but then to try to put two-way traffic onto Free Street makes no sense to me.
No, but I take Hamilton being that it's a one-way over Free.
That, well, that makes it easier in terms of you can only make the left-hand in going down, so you can do that turn, but, I mean, neither one of them are great, and I'm not saying it's a, it's a great situation, but to try two-way traffic onto, onto Free and us making it worse, just doesn't make sense to me.
So, that places us in an awkward spot, but I, I, I shared those, I shared those same sentiments when we were before the zoning board, and you see what the result was in the decision.
That's why I said, if, if they, if they insist that they live by those, then you can't ask for an amendment from the zoning board, because I, as a member of the planning board and worrying about safety concerns, I can't vote for the plan the way it is. The, the obvious choice is not to have, not to go to the zoning board for, for any changes, in which case you'll never have to face that issue, which I know is not necessarily true because I believe some of the ones you're asking for, and we even recommended them,
Right.
should go forward, but unfortunately, I can't, I can't live with what Dave said to you.
So, I, I think the other thing that's maybe worth noting is that the auto use in and of itself is not a major traffic generator, and I think that the number of, the number of customers that would want to return back up Hamilton might be limited, but I, I haven't done any sort of study that, that would...
Yeah, the fact of the matter is, it's being designed as a, as a commercial venue. You may be there today, someone could be there tomorrow. I'm approving this forever for the town of Milford to a certain extent. I mean, the use can't change, but it could be a use that, that is much more in and out in the future, and as long... in the future, and as long as it fits under our retail usage, it's whatever use. So that, that, I can't evaluate it on what your usage, and I don't know how much in and out there is in, in terms of an AutoPots dealer or not, but, but in terms of it, it's still, that, that to me isn't an issue. It's still the in and out onto, onto Free Street being an issue.
Is, is there a mechanism that you folks would have to indicate that what you're approving as a part of the amendment is for this specific use? Isn't that any future change?
No, there's nothing, no.
I mean, he should, should probably note, just for the record, that.
Well, that's me, I don't want, yeah.
That driveway issue was something the ZBA imposed on their own, it certainly wasn't something that.
That didn't come from us, right?
That the board recommended or that the applicant even asked for.
Right. No, I know that.
Yeah, so.
Unfortunately, and that's why I said, I have no idea why they want it or, or what their purposes are, but to me, that, that makes this very, very difficult.
If I can remember correctly, that when, when that place, that lot was emptied, people were cutting over to go to Hamilton Street instead of going through the center of town, they were cutting through that area.
Well, the lot was.
Not as much this way, it was the other way.
It was the other way, we kept it mean way, yeah.
Yeah, it was on the other side of.
It was the other side, yeah.
And, and not to speak for your zoning board, but I think that the, the main sentiment was that there was too many access points proposed, and that they wanted to attempt to prevent as much traffic as they could from going down into the neighborhood.
Yeah, but which neighborhood you wanna look at? It's gotta go somewhere, and then, and that's the issue that I have, I guess.
Let me just ask a question of clarity. The rear of the building, you said there was an exit point there?
Yes.
Was that specific? In other words, did they grant you a exit point, or they say that your exit point could only be there?
Oh, are you talking on Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes.
No exit.
That, that.
There's none.
There could be no exit, it could be an entrance only, was the specific condition. Their, their conditions were very specific with, with eliminate.
No, no, that, that, you answered the question, that's fine.
I know.
That's why I'm saying, I mean.
I'm with Joe.
I think what you're in, if I lived on Free Street, I'd be, I'd be awful upset that someone decided that, that my neighborhood isn't, isn't as important as yours on Hamilton.
I'm not dumping traffic in, in the Free Street, because it doesn't make sense. It just really doesn't.
That's.
I think it also causes, in effect, a safety concern, because if you look at fire apparatuses, you're only allowing them one way in. In theory, that's what you're allowing them.
Well, I mean, the other thing that we don't have control over, and as far as I could see down there, I believe parking is allowed. So if you try to go two-way traffic in and out, plus where the parking is, and we don't have control over where parking is or isn't, I mean, that's way too tight to be having, bringing people in and out.
Doesn't make any sense.
It just doesn't, yeah, I, I mean, when, when the left out of Hamilton Street on a one-way street would get some portion of the traffic out and away and off of Main Street and down that way, and, and to me, not into a neigh, not into the, the Free Street neighborhood, nor the Ravanna Street neighborhood, which is where they're gonna end up having to go, or out the other way to get, to get out to Cedar Street. So, I, that's, that's my take on it.
I, I agree, I, I agree with you, Joe.
Not having that exit.
Being down.
I mean, if they, if they allowed one, not the other, maybe there's some way I could work that out, that they didn't have both, but to, to not allow any exit from this site onto Hamilton Street, just is, is something that's, that's not even a non-starter. I mean, maybe there'd be some way that I could, I could convince myself that having one and not, and not the other would be workable or something, I'm not sure. But neither just makes no sense to me.
Larry?
There were a few things, I, in addition to that, there were a few things, items on the site plan that I wanted to mention, and I can't tell with my trifocals.
Yeah.
First off, I was under the impression that this extra stall was a turnaround stall, not an extra parking space.
No, that's correct.
So it was stripped off supposedly to discourage people from parking, because now, thanks to ZBA, it's a dead end. The other issue.
They're never gonna get in or out of their pad.
In terms of where the new curb line along Hamilton Ave was going to be, it's not clear from this, but what I had relayed to the applicant's engineer was that the paving seam where the Hamilton Street paving ended up.
Where the Hamilton Street paving ended and the seam for the paving of the rest of the entire lot began is actually where the curb should be. Because the curb needs to be inside the right-of-way. And it's not clear from this that this has changed at all from the original site plan, which puts the new curb line back on private property. So, this, this still, it doesn't reflect the change that I was under the impression was gonna be made to show the curb line to be on that old paving seam, which is an appropriate location, as well as being able then to add that area between the new back of curb and this interior curb and make that all landscaping, and in fact, extend the plantings along there. If we're gonna get stuck with no driveway, you need to be able to tell that it's not a driveway, because with the little grass there, you're not gonna notice until it's too late that there's really no access at that point.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure Highway Department wants that curb.
So I, I would think at minimum, you would wanna continue this until some of those things start showing up on the plan, unless there's a, a set of plans that show that, but this graphic doesn't. But back to the, the primary concern of, of the, the ZBA imposing that no access, just procedurally, I think the, the applicant could at some point go back and seek an amendment to the variance. But I think in terms of the overall timeline, what, what might actually help them, I don't know, but it might help them to, to proceed with something like this and then be able to go back and, and prove to them that it doesn't work that way. But that's, that's kind of unfortunate to be in that situation. Otherwise, I, I'm not sure how long they can drag this out if the board, you know, doesn't feel it's appropriate to approve the plan as is.
It's not.
I don't think you get this, I, I think the sense of the board is, they're not gonna approve it the way it is. So it's really up to the applicant how he wants to proceed.
But I would imagine that this board would support an appeal to go back and look at that traffic situation again, and, and I would think you would wanna have a traffic study by a certified traffic engineer to support that kind of an appeal.
Again?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even, but, but to be totally honest, Larry, I, I don't know, I don't know what a traffic engineer is going to give you in this case. I mean, this is not, to me, this is not an issue of, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna throw some turning templates on there, more power to you, but.
No, I was thinking in terms of trip generation.
Yeah, but in terms of trip generation, whether it's one or whether it's ten.
Doesn't make any difference.
I, I mean, to me, the issue is that it's just wrong. So I.
No, I don't disagree.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need a traffic engineer to do this. I mean, this, this, this to me, I, I understand, I understand them not wanting to put traffic on Hamilton Street, but you know what? Putting it on Free Street isn't the, isn't the right answer, so let's split it up between the two.
Right.
You know, and that, that to me is, 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 is where I'm sitting from. So I, I don't, if they think they need a traffic study to, to allow it, then more power to them, but in terms of, of me and what I'm arguing about, it, it's not a traffic issue.
So.
I mean, the way it is, I, I can't vote for the plan. I, we, we can continue it if, if that's the pleasure of the applicant. I, I don't have an issue with doing that, but you know, unless there were a change, we can continue it whenever. I, I can't vote for it the way it is, so I'm not sure.
No, you can vote it, but it's just not.
Well, yeah, I can.
It's not, it's not gonna be favorable.
Yes.
Right.
I guess what I would ask is for a continuance and a letter from the board to the planning board in advisory capacity, strongly encouraging that the northerly Hamilton driveway be unrestricted enter and exit.
You mean a letter to the zoning board?
A letter to the zoning board.
I don't have a problem with doing that. The only way I think we, we can do that that would be, that would be fair to all of us and, and all is, I don't know if you can draw something up, Larry, expressing that in our next meeting, we can.
Yep.
Discuss it.
We, we can discuss it, make sure it's okay, and then we, and so we continue this for a month from now. And then at our meeting two, two weeks from now, we'll, we'll discuss that letter, make sure it meets all of our, what we feel is correct, and then we can send it off to you. I, I don't have any issue with that, if that's acceptable to the rest of the board members.
Just in terms of the timeline, the ZBA's meeting in February is the twelfth. Our next meeting is February third. In fact, we have several forwarding reviews to go to them for the twelfth anyway. So, in terms of getting something to them. We can have the letter for you to review your next meeting on February the third and send that on to the ZBA with all the other stuff. And then you wanna, you were suggesting to continue this to the second meeting in February?
Well, he's gonna need it for that long to keep it open, because we're, obviously we're not gonna be able to vote on it on the third, because we're, we're gonna be, so that's what I'm thinking, yeah, is the next meeting, I guess would be the seventeenth, we would have this again at that point.
I'll, I'll do my part to try to get the application work into zoning board. I don't know what the timeframe's for, for getting it in and.
Yeah, that's fine.
And get it, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're telling you, we'll have, we'll have the letter ready on, you know, after the third, we'll, we'll discuss it at the third. I'm sure if we have any corrections, we'll make it the night of the third and it'll be available, you know, the next day afterwards. You, you base your schedule, whatever you need, but that's, that's the best we can do.
And keep in track, keep in touch with Larry about the letter, so you can catch it, you know.
As soon as it's available.
The next day.
Their agenda deadline is tomorrow at noon, as far as I know, for the February twelfth meeting.
Okay. We just need a motion to continue the meeting, I believe, till, till seventeen. February seventeenth. Which is, I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Joe to continue the meeting, second by John, until February seventeenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, number six.
I'll set, uh, let's see, this is number six, amended site plan, two thirty-five East Main Street, Interstate Batteries. Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna read the letters first. All right, Mr. Chairman, the applicant recommend, this is amended site plan, Interstate Battery, two thirty-five East Main Street, map thirty-two, book seventy-two, lot one, AIC zone. The applicant, the applicant recommends amended site plan approval to allow the construction of a ten thousand four hundred square foot addition to the existing commercial buildings on, on the subject property. The Westerly Building, number one, is to be raised. Am I on the right one?
Yep.
I am. The proposed use will be retail wholesale vehicle battery store associated and associated parking. Specifically, a two thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot addition will connect the existing Easterly Building, Building Two and Three, and, and eight thousand thirty-two square foot addition will also extend Building Two to the west. The expanded twenty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square foot building will be, will accommodate one thousand, one thousand square foot of retail space, four thousand square feet of office space, as well as nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet of wholesale and storage area. Adequate off-street parking is provided in two parking lots. The site access, access and traffic circulation is designated to separate the retail traffic from the, from the staff parking and fleet delivery truck, semi-truck access. The existing driveway are being narrowed and relocated to meet the current design standard. Also, the amount of paving impervious service will be reduced to twenty-five thousand five hundred forty-four square feet, twenty-three percent from eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-one square feet, eighty impervi, eighty percent impervious of sixty-three thousand three, three hundred and sixty square feet, fifty-seven percent impervious. The applicant, all applicable, applicable zoning and site plan requirements appear to be met, therefore, we recommend the amended site plan approval to the subject relevant to the comments. All right, so there's the health, there's a whole list of comments from the engineer? Do you have all that?
I did address them and I met with her this morning.
You did meet with her? She has quite a few of them.
Yeah, there are two, there are two letters from Bonnie, so it's finally been resolved. The first letter from her was the nineteenth.
Yeah, I, I.
And then Peter responded.
Okay.
On the thirteenth, and then Bonnie did another one on the twentieth, today.
Let's see.
So that part should be alright.
There's another one. So, so all the addresses, like, you know, there are significant changes to the drainage on the site, drainage, drainage structures proposed are shallow, are.
I can go through those if you want.
You go through, I want you to go through those, Bonnie, yeah. Cause, cause there, she's got another one, let's see.
That's the one.
Yeah. And then we have the highway department, I've reviewed all above. Site plan is satisfactory. All roads are open, must be retained, so he has satisfactory. The fire department, he has two comments. Did you go through those?
Yes, I did meet.
Fire hydrant, you met with him? The water company has a number of comments, request the following plan amendments. You have the water companies also that we can go through?
Yes.
All right. And. All right.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Well, for the record, my name's Peter Lavoy, I work with Gary Aaron Hellman, here tonight representing Interstate Battery, and with me tonight is Daniel Schmidt, he's the president of Interstate. So the existing projects located on East Main Street, which runs along the top of the page here, the existing lot is approximately two point two acres in size. We have a wetland in a wooded area on this side of the lot, and then from this edge all the way to here is all pavement right now, currently. And we have an existing retail office warehouse building here in this location. We have an existing storage building here, and then we have another building right here that's gonna be removed, it's an office and storage area as well. Basically, in the, in, in existing conditions, this is very flat, as I said, it's all pavement. This curb cut is open from this point here to here, and then we have a small curb cut in this location here. So basically what we're proposing is, we're proposing this addition right here to connect the two buildings, and then we're proposing another addition to expand on the warehouse. We're proposing a loading dock in this area here for large semi-trucks that come in and, and deliver the batteries. And then, inside the building, we have an overhead door here, here, and here. Basically what they do is they bring in the small, small, like a polar springs truck, they drive it in, they load the batteries on each side, and then the trucks leave. So basically what we're proposing is all, all the truck traffic and employee traffic would be here, so it's concentrated on this side where all the warehouse is. And then, this side over here will remain the office area, the one thousand square feet of retail and the four thousand square feet of office. So this is mainly the retail, retail, so they're separate, separate entities, basically. I did add the new hydrant for the fire chief, he wanted the fire, he wanted the hydrant here, as well as we brought in a new six-inch water line for the water department and brought that into the new addition which needed to be sprinkled. So we have the water line coming in, it feeds off for the hydrant, and then we have a, a domestic and fire that will service the building. All other services will be, there's a man, there's a couple services. This service will be removed per the, the water department's requirements, and then this water service will remain for this section of the building. All the gas service, this is serviced by also by gas off of East Main Street, so this will be stubbed here, and this gas service will remain in this location here. I did propose an over, a transformer pad in case if we needed additional electric. Also, we have our dumpster location in this location here. And then, there will be trucks parked inside the building, so we'll, there will be a, a floor drain design. There is no sewer in the area, so we're not gonna tie into the sewer. We are on individual septics, so this will be septic. So, we have to also propose a holding. So we have to also propose a holding tank for the floor drain system. Septic, there are two existing septics, one in this location here for this building, and there's one in this location here for this building. Basically, those two will be abandoned, and we will propose a septic tank to a pump chamber to a new leaching area in this location here. We did do soil testing, that was witnessed by the Board of Health, so, and that's why we have a design for it. Parking, basically, this driveway is going to be closed down to 30 feet because of, of the larger trucks. Wanted to make sure that we could get the trucks in. Also, this is Mass Highway, so we will, once we have approval from the planning board, we have to submit to Mass Highway for their approval. So basically, by taking this entrance here, closing it down to 30, and we're relocating this entrance, which is here, which is off our property. This, this access is through someone else's property. So we're taking the entrance here, moving it down so it's on our property, and then we're removing all this pavement that is in this location. So this area here is paved in the existing conditions, this is going to be all grass right there. This is all pavement here, this is going to be all grass. And then, like I said, this whole area here is pavement. So as you see all the green, this is all additional grass area that's going to be added. Basically, what we're doing, we have to raise the building and reconstruct the, the parking lot anyway. So we, we determined that we would remove that, that pavement, which did increase the open space by 23%. Drainage, I have a catch basin in this location here, which has a four-foot sump. I have another catch basin here in the loading dock area. And then I have a, a drop inlet, grass drop, a grass drop inlet in this location here. Basically, there's a high point here. Runoff runs into a grass swale with check dams and then goes into a, that, that lawn or drop inlet. And it runs down and goes into a water quality swale in this location here. So basically, that will handle the TSS removal. And then these two buildings, right, these two buildings here will go into this recharge location. This is just for recharge of the roof. There is no recharge now, but we did provide this recharge to meet the state requirement. This is a redevelopment project, so, you know, you're supposed to do as much as you can economically feasible. We have met all stormwater guidelines. We're not increasing any runoff towards the wetlands and no volume as well. So I can go through the letters. The water department, I did show the connection to the existing line. We're putting in a new line here, like I said. There is no sewer, so the 10-foot sewer, 10 feet from the sewer doesn't apply. We will use Duck the Lion. The client will, you know, meet with the water department, or the contractor that he hires will meet with them and follow their, their regulations. We're not proposing any irrigation on the site. The highway department, like I said, I did, I did email Scott. There was a question about the vertical granite curb that Bonnie had had. But he also informed me that it's, he has no jurisdiction over that. So like I said, we will be filing with Mass Highway as soon as the planning board approves the plans. The fire chief, I did talk to him about the hydrant location. And then I also, if you look at the site plan, I added a dimension from the building to the parking lot. He said it had to be a minimum of 20 feet, and I did show a minimum of 20 feet. This, this really doesn't generate a lot of retail use, it's more, more distribution. So these, these parking lot, these parking spaces on this side really probably won't be used. It's more the employees will park over here. So the fire chief was all set. And then Bonnie, I did submit a drainage report. I did add sumps to all the catch basins and drain manholes to meet my TSS removal. I did provide her with TSS worksheets, worksheets. We did soil testing, it was, it was in the stormwater management, so I did do soil testing. So that's, I gave, I pointed that out to her, that's how we determined where groundwater was. There was a 21E done in, in 94 that I gave her. My client did hire someone recently, last week, to do another 21E for the project. So as soon as we get results from that. I did give her the 1994 report, but I will give her the newer one once we get it. She, let's see. She had some questions about the, I guess I'm looking at the newer one. There was a, on the previous layout, there was a, like a settling basin in this area here that was removed. I don't need it, because I'm not directing any drainage that way. I did show her where the sizing of this was found in the hydraulic report, so she's fine with that. And then the last, the last comments on her letter were mainly dealt with the, the leach field. She wanted me to add a couple things, a zable filter to the outlet of the septic tank. She wanted me to add a note about minimum separation from the infiltration chambers, which I did. Adjusted the slab elevation on the plan view of the, the septic design, and I added a 40-mil barrier. She had concerns about the leaching area going into this swale along here, so I did add the 40-mil barrier in a U shape to, to keep that.
And the last one?
And then the last one, I revised the detail. It showed grass, it was just a standard detail, and I just changed that to pavement. So I mean, that's, we did file a notice of intent, we are in front of them in February. But she, you know, Bonnie reviews it, and I did talk to, she said that, it seemed to be, I, I addressed all her concerns, so.
All right. It's a pleasure of the board.
I had a.
Oh, Larry, sorry.
There was one additional comment that came up that wasn't in any of the, the written reports, and I don't even remember now who mentioned it. But looking at it, I think they had a point. The sign, the pylon sign location that's proposed on the site plan is nearer the Westerly Drive entrance, and that drive entrance is for all of the delivery trucks. So I kind of think they're going to know where they're going. If you're going to have a pylon sign to advertise the place, that's not who you're advertising for, because they're your own drivers. I would suggest you move the pylon sign up near the retail and office entrance. That in terms of directing people to the correct driveway, for the, for the limited number of customers that will be going into the retail store, I would think you'd want them to get them going the correct driveway.
That is a good point.
I mean, if you're going to spend all that money for a pylon sign, then get the biggest bang for your buck. And possibly put a smaller sign at the other driveway for deliveries or whatever. I mean, your drivers are going to know where to go, but the rest of us probably won't. Well, some of us might.
So will you, will you consider adding, adding that, the sign?
Well, I would just.
I just, I, I just added the sign, because we're, we're removing the big sign right there where the island is, and then this sign, it's, it's kind of in the way of the, of the entrance, so I just added the sign location. I wasn't, I didn't think about putting it.
All right.
This is an amended site plan, and you're around, right, over the next few days?
Yep, I'll be around.
If you want to tweet that, then I'll just call Lena and see if you can sign it.
Just move the sign, move the sign down here.
Right.
Peter, the septic system, you couldn't get that into the grassed area?
Over here?
Yeah.
Well, that's where I did my testing. I put it, that's.
The reason why I'm asking is you've got it underneath pavement, which is the preferred location.
Right, but we have a vent, so it's vented, and septic's are allowed under, under pavement.
I think you were trying to shorten the distance you're pumping.
Well, I, I, this, originally, we had more pavement. So when we went out there, this was, we really, we weren't going to adjust the, the pavement area. Then I met with Larry, and Larry said, well, if you can reduce the paved area, that would help you, help, you know, it would be better. So I had, I had already done the soil testing, and we already paid for the soil testing with the, with the Board of Health. So, I mean, and like I said, septic's are allowed under pavement as long as you vent it. The D-box, the, the chambers are going to be H20 loading, as well as the D-box is going to be an H20 loading. I think the D-box is in the, the grass area anyway. So.
The only thing I had was, I'm looking at it and, and just want to make sure that that corner up at the upper section is in their property. I'm looking at it here, and it almost looks like it's crossing into, like the corner of the radius might be slightly out, so you just may want to clean it up just to make sure.
Okay, no, I will, because once I, yeah.
Is that all, John?
No, I'm sorry.
I'll make a, a motion.
Okay.
To amend the site plan.
Motion made by Pat to amend the site plan, seconded by Joe. John?
Sure.
Seconded by John, all in favor? Unanimous?
I mean, the one thing that's outstanding that we don't have in here, I don't have any issues with it, but Bonnie's, Bonnie hasn't actually commented back. I know Peter said he did all the things. We didn't have a letter in the file that Bonnie agreed to any, to, to any or all of those things.
She acknowledged late this afternoon that that was.
No, but unfortunately, this is one of the problems. She, she's not, she doesn't show up at the meetings like Mike did. Perhaps Mike was the one who, you know, who.
Spoiled you?
Spoiled us, however, we, we're only as good as the information provided us, and we have to assume that the applicant and Larry are, are being bona fide with the information, so.
Well, she also, at the end of her letter, she did say she recommended.
She did say she did accept it.
She did.
Everything except for the septic, which technically the Board of Health has to approve.
I have to submit that.
So yes.
A motion to stand.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous of four.
Thank you.
And.
Peter, thank God you got out of the house, we, we didn't know what happened to you.
Number seven, mylar's for South Central 2, modification.
Ready?
Aren't ready yet.
Ready, yeah.
Maybe, maybe next time.
All right.
The, the balance of your agenda, eight, nine, 10, and 11 are just suggestions we have for possible amendments, either the subdivision regulations or some zoning bylaw amendments. And the intention was just to distribute them tonight to make sure everybody was literally on the same page.
Take them and read them.
And then discuss them, if it's all right to put them on next meeting's agenda for discussion.
Right. Well, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of reading that we, we need to really go through before we make any comments. So I think what we'll do is put it on for February, is it, is it 17th?
Third, sixth.
Larry, one of the.
The next meeting, thank you, good night.
Good night, guys.
One thing you may want to take a look at to a certain extent. I, I know, I was, I just went through this very quickly, was the drainage stuff. And the applicants, if they're tied into the town system, have to meet the town's MS4 permit. I'm not sure how or, you know, how we would handle it or not. I, I do know other towns are actually requiring developments to exceed the permit requirement levels. So that at the end of the day, the town portion of it can be combined in, and we actually end up having to do a little bit less. So maybe something that you want to take a look at, because I'm, I'm going through it in Cambridge right now, and, and know that Cambridge is, is effectively putting it on the back of any new development to make sure that they exceed the state standards, so that when they combine it with theirs, they're a little further along. Won't get us out of the situation, but it may help us a little bit, so maybe something you want to look at.
I'll mention it to Bonnie. I don't know if you want me to just run through quickly what these are and why you have them.
Yeah.
Bonnie's got a memo for number eight in terms of why the subdivision regs need to be amended. She's running into instances where there's been down gradient flooding or, or drainage problems in subdivisions once the individual lots start being developed. And then there was some lack of data provided on the subdivisions when they were initially approved. So she was suggesting some amendments. Let's see, number nine.
Number nine.
Was possible text amendment for certificate of compliance. As you can see on the attachments, there's a, a whole phrase missing, the end of one sentence and the beginning of the other. And as nearly as I can find, the last time that that was all written properly is what you see on the last page, which is from the 1978.
Wow.
So this, this basically fixes that and, and, you know, makes a small tweak, so it's primarily housekeeping. Number 10.
Number 10.
Another possible zoning amendment. Again, this gets back to Bonnie's concern about regulating individual lot drainage. So whether it was part of a relatively recent subdivision or not, there isn't anything right now in the, in the bylaw, or certainly you can't do drainage on 81P plans through the subdivision regulations, because they're not subdivisions. So what this would do from a zoning standpoint is, is potentially allow for that kind of review and some protection for the neighbors, especially the downstream, down gradient neighbors on individual lot developments. We'd had a few instances recently. So that's what that's going to be about. And then finally, the, the last one's a possible amendment that deals with farmer's markets. I know the selectmen in this board had wanted us to take a look at it. Jennifer Demont and the Farmer's Market Committee.
They really should have to have a special permit to operate, so I, I think anything we could do to allow them to operate a little more freely.
Well, but that's why we put the mechanics of it together, and then the last version was from, was back from Jan. We've been going back and forth. So again, we'll give you a chance to look through this. If anybody has any specific questions, you could individually email me, and I'll try to respond.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay, ladies. We're going to look at, we're going to look everything over and then meet again, and you'll, you'll, you'll hear it from us. We haven't read any, any of this yet, so once we do.
Motion to adjourn.
I've never found it good to not be there when you're on the agenda, just in case.
Thank you so much, thanks for being, being very patient.
Thank you for even considering this.
Move agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn by Pat, seconded by John, unanimous of four. Good night, everyone.